Call our work session to order. Stephanie Straub, come on down.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Before you in your packets, my department has put together some proposed changes to our procurement policy, the surplus disposition policy, and the debarment policy. And we've outlined that the majority of these changes occur within the procurement policy, and our intent is to try to align them more succinctly with state policy and state code. The last time we did this was in 2015. Some significant threshold changes have occurred since 2015. Most notably, small purchasing procedure thresholds have gone up from $5,000 to $10,000, as well as the professional services formal procurement trigger has gone up from $60,000 to $80,000. And sole source postings.
What is the advantage of being in alignment with the state policy?
On one, because we're so small, and we don't, we usually have to use vendors from out of the area. It would help us to be more closely aligned to them because folks get really confused with localities who have different policies that vary from the state. So it helps us when we're trying to work with vendors. Internally, it will help us reduce, quite frankly, some paperwork. We've mentioned this to the auditor. So for right now, when we have it at $5,000, that requires all of our departments to purchase anything from zero or a penny to $4,999 to use their best judgment. If it's anything over that, they have to get certain amounts of quotes. And this would help align it more with what our auditors are suggesting. For example, as our fixed asset threshold, which they're suggesting to bump up to $10,000. Right now it's at five. So kind of bringing everything to that $10,000 threshold would make it easier, in my opinion, for our internal and external customers to understand.
I would just add to that that, you know, when you have a sort of a computer device that, you know, is a fixed asset when it's really not, it just makes our terminology a little wonky.
What caught my eye was the emergency procurement going from 60 down to 50. Is that a, there's something behind that?
Not in particular, sir. I did that to align more closely with what the state goes by. They require that justification at 50,000. And for the sake of argument, I was trying to just mirror the state as much as possible just for ease. And we can certainly leave it at 60.
Well, no, no, I just, I, it caught my eye and I didn't see the rationale anywhere.
It was mostly just to align with the state. And more internally for Amanda and I, that's really only something we have to deal with internally is our postings that we have to do on the state website and downstairs. Doesn't really affect any other deployments. And then there were a few edits in here. I worked with Eric on updating some things in general. So he did add some language in here clarifying constitutional officers and, you know, their budget is technically under this insofar as those funds are derived from the county. And that's all mostly the size of the thresholds that we changed. Update the departments or reflect management services department. Add an electronic file or better system instead of a notebook that sits on a shelf that's not been opened in years because it's all done electronically.
And I reached out to constitutional officers with that change and didn't hear any concerns about that.
Any questions on the procurement policy?
No, I think this is a good idea. And this needs to come to us again.
Yes, sir. So we also have a few changes to the surplus disposition policy. And we were thinking about bringing all three of these policies back to you all at your next meeting with, to add any suggestions or edits you may have. For the surplus disposition policy, we aligned this. The threshold was to come to you when, you know, things were $5,000. We've adjusted that to the 10. There was also some legal language that Eric wanted us to put in here about if we, you know, dispose of something over $2 million, you have to go public hearing. And section C is things that are sold or donated to charitable organizations. If you recall, I believe last spring you donated a surplus social services vehicle to someone who had been in the program and was, you know, needed transportation to and from college and to and from work. This just actually puts the code in there that allows you to do that. And as well as for service animals. But those were the only significant changes to that policy. And the last policy is the debarment policy. The only thing we did here was some text edit and formatting and changing the department name from procurement division to management services.
Could you comment on the, let me see if I can find where I am in section, I believe section 1.03 of the surplus property. I have a comment out there that says, or set the limit to $100,000. I never quite put all those pieces together.
Legally, Eric says you all can do whatever you want. So if you want Amanda and I to come to you every time you have a vehicle to sell and you vote on it, that's fine. If you only want to see any big ticket items that we're getting rid of, you can move it to $100,000. So that is really whatever you're comfortable with. I mean, we don't mind continuing to come to you, you know, it's mostly cars. And it's been a long time since I've done like a lot of furniture that would do that amount. So it's, Eric said, it's really whatever you're comfortable with. So that's really just something for you all to sort of think about and give us key back on. It doesn't matter to us.
I might also mention while you're thinking about the dollar threshold is kind of how we normally do things. But if you, if you had a, another trigger that was sort of in your mind like a dollar threshold but always vehicles or a dollar threshold but not vehicles because, you know, that's, we get that you're always surplusing police cars, we don't want to hear them. But so no police cars, but yes ambulances. I mean, whatever you, you're comfortable.
That's what I was going to say is more so than ambulances because we've got a good policy with the ambulances now. And what we've done with the CIP is working well. But fire apparatus is something.
More expensive.
Much more expensive. And I've seen departments that sell their quote unquote surplus fire apparatus for large amounts of money. And I've seen other departments that give away, literally give away
Right.
a $250,000 piece of apparatus. And I don't think that's something that this board is in the mindset of doing something like that.
And that's something, sir, that that $100,000 threshold would definitely catch because, you know, the medic units are $367,000. So that would catch them, but then you wouldn't necessarily get every Dodge Charger that I bring before you unless you want to. It's totally up to you all.
So it sounds like, I mean, maybe there's a number, your, your recommendation, I'll characterize it as recommendation to go from five to 10. Maybe there's a number that's more like, because this is the original purchase price, you know. Yeah, or, or some number like that, that, that would sort of catch the things that we would be involved with. Because, I mean, I don't think you need to do the extra paperwork for that, you know, five-year-old Dodge Charger.
And that's why we added in here $100,000. So the new procurement policy suggestion that we have before you is for us to only come to you now for procurement approval when it's $100,000. So that's why if you want us to also use that same logic to come to you to dispose of something that was originally $100,000, whatever you prefer.
That's where, like I said, the fire apparatus.
It would be triggered, isn't it?
Right. Well, what's happening with the fire apparatus, if you, if you were lucky enough to pay $100,000 today, when they're going to get rid of it, it, no, it's still worth the original purchase price. It's not worth the purchase price of new. First fire truck I ever specked out was $68,000.
Ooh, I wish I had that now.
Did I have those hands?
But did that include the horse?
It even carried the little chute that goes behind. But that's what I'm saying is with the way the costs have escalated on emergency apparatus, the surplus price on it could be more.
Than the original.
It could be worth more.
It could. And, and it's, and since we use GovDeals, it's, it's an option. So unless you all want, I mean, if you want to legally, you can put a price on it and you could advertise it and take price. But we usually set limits on GovDeals that you won't accept a bed below a certain amount.
Right.
So. Whatever you all prefer, if you want to think about it and give back to us, but.
That's the only area that I have any concern about.
So $100,000 would count for anything large like that. The only things that I could think of that might, that would be emergency equipment that might fall under that might be.
Brush truck, maybe, or a chief's vehicle.
I was thinking chief's vehicle or maybe sometimes some of the bulk apparatus that, or like SDVA stuff or things that they normally honestly donate because we.
Yeah, that is useless. Maybe we take your, your point about, said it at something like 50 to try to take care of the sedans and the pickup trucks and the sheriff's, you know, cruisers and those kinds of things. Larger items. But pick up all the, all the other ones.
Our upping, so the upping price, just to give you a ballpark, for a lot of those SUVs, not the Chargers, but the SUVs used for patrol and firing EMS is about $60,000. Fully put and updated.
But is some of that stuff that comes off and gets put on the next vehicle?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Unless it's been improved and then they, or the model changes and they have, I'm sorry.
So that really shouldn't count as, you know.
Is the part of the.
There's about $14,000 to $19,000 in upping depending on which vehicle it is.
Okay. Well, let's go with that for now.
$50,000, sir?
Any other questions, concerns? So does it come in for a formal approval in January?
Yes, sir. We'll make the edits and send them back to Eric and we'll have them to present to you in January.
Excellent. Anything else, gentlemen? I didn't see anything on the debarment. Your edits are a little hard to type out, isn't it?
And the department clear as the state code, we didn't.
All right. With that being said, thank you, Stephanie and Amanda.
Thank you.
I figured you wanted to talk to him for a while or something. Work session, as a gentleman. And that's it.
We know next time to schedule it.
Judge of legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there is no changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda. Move to approve. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Next is special presentations and appearances. Presentation of a resolution of recognition and congratulations to Dogwood Village. Pruna, you're out there somewhere.
And Pam Dozier is here as well.
Lee, come on up.
Pam wanted to make a short presentation to us, tell us what they've been doing.
Okay.
Hey, I wanted to share with you all a few of our accomplishments that we've made this year. We have a focused infection control survey and we only had one deficiency. And that deficiency helped us improve our infection control even more so. So we were really pleased with that. The original Rosie the Riveter was on Facebook with our T-shirt that we had, hashtag break the chain, and Rosie the Riveter was on there. So we're a little famous from that perspective. We received recognition from Newsweek as being in the top 10 nursing facilities in the state of Virginia. Our epidemiologist for the Rappaport Health District has made a comment that Dogwood Village is by far the best nursing home I have right now. So keep doing what you're doing. And he was referencing from the infection control perspective. We have been very, very fortunate, not by would. We have had no COVID cases. Our residents have not had COVID, so we are very pleased and proud to be able to say that. The Health Quality Innovations Network gave us recognition for being the innovator of the year for Virginia. And they are a national organization. And we came up with a very simple idea to protect our residents with dementia that would not leave their mask on. We created this clothing wrap and we put clear shower curtains on it so that we could bend it around them and keep them protected. And so we got innovation of the year for that. The US government has put out a infection control training program and they are tracking how many people in each facility have taken it. And we are, one of the facilities is at the top of the list in compliance with that. So we're very focused again on infection control. We created a visiting booth for our family members. We have added hospitality aides to our staffing so that they can assist our residents in ways to help the certified nursing assistants. We have developed a, an executive committee that is designed to bring our two buildings together here. We made our infection preventionist a full-time position and this is going to be something that's required. But we, we've already done that, so we're ahead of the game from that perspective. We've had awesome teamwork. We have to test twice a week for COVID. And so our team has come together and everybody has volunteered. And in particular, our director of maintenance has just been phenomenal. John Mullen is the name. And we've had a new competitive wage scale for our team members so that we can attract staff. Challenges that we've had, obviously COVID and our testing supplies, making sure that we have enough tests. Again, we're testing twice a week and we just found out that the positivity rate in Orange has gone up to 10.4%, which means that we have to continue the twice-a-week testing. We test about 500 people twice a week. So that's about 1,000 people that we're testing twice a week. So it's, it takes an army to make this happen, really. We have to have all our team members involved. Families are very frustrated, obviously, because they can't come in and see their loved ones. We're trying to work with them as much as possible and that's where the visitation booth comes in. But now with the percentage up over 10%, nobody can come into the building again until that percentage drops down. So that's unfortunate. The residents, we, it's challenging with their mental health because they have to stay in their rooms a lot. And it's, it's tough. It's tough for them. I mean, you stop and think about this, it's been going on for 10 months. And we get to go home, but they have to stay in their room, you know, and so it's very challenging. So we try to keep them busy while they're in their rooms. Finances, we've had a loss revenue due to our census, which is down. People don't want to move in because they won't be able to see their loved ones. Plus, we're not getting the referrals from the hospital like we have in the past because the elective surgeries have been stopped and then restarted. And now they'll probably be stopped again with this surge that we're in right now. So it's a challenge from that perspective. Plus the increased expenses for the PPE and the testing supplies. And overtime bonuses, that kind of thing. We're not allowed to have people in, so we haven't had any students. So we're not being able to draw from the CNA students and the nursing students. I already mentioned the census. We're, we're really trying to be creative in our thinking process and being proactive as much as possible. But that's a challenge too, because everybody's getting COVID fatigue. The number of man-hours it takes for screening and testing is just unbelievable because, like I said, it's not one or two people that does it. It's usually about 10 people that are, that's doing the testing. And then they have to go back and do their, their normal jobs. So it can be a real challenge. And staffing, we're maintaining our staffing, but we have open positions. And again, a lot of people don't want to come in to the nursing home business right now. Somebody told me they heard on the news that working in a nursing home right now is the most dangerous job in the country. I said, well, that's not good, you know, to pass that around. And then I started as the administrator at the beginning of March and the pandemic was right there waiting for me. So that's been a little bit of a challenge. But it's been wonderful to be a part of Dogwood Village. So just wanted to share those things with you.
I might mention one of the things that she does extremely effectively is communicating with the staff and the residents and the families. A recent letter she just sent out talking about the vaccine, that people are going to get, have effects from the vaccine. They're going to have some sort of impact. And preparing people for that in advance, I think is just super because a lot of people are going to say, well, I took the vaccine and I got COVID or something like that. So, I mean, she's, she's done a great job. And that's been going on, you know, since March, that people, effective communications with the families. And that has made it a lot easier for the families to accept some real tough restrictions. I'm really pleased with that. It's been great. She and her staff are doing just amazing work. And I get reports on a weekly basis of what's going on. And then we have, have our meetings and we just sort of shake our heads to say, how's it all getting done? Anyway, thank you.
Want to join me up there on line?
Sure, I will.
Because of the work you do, that's why. You want the staff up here, Tim?
Yes.
Sure, I'd say.
Come on up, Tim.
I'll move back and ask up as well. Might as well get here so everybody in the public who's watching this will know we're all here. I'll go ahead and read this. "A resolution to recognize and congratulate Dogwood Village on its 50 years of service to the citizens of Orange County and its selection as one of the 10 best nursing homes in Virginia. Whereas about 55 years ago, Orange County Supervisor Monroe Waugh and Lindsay Gordon identified the critical need for long-term elderly care in Orange County and began efforts to meet that need. And whereas the citizens of Orange County, as indicated in a survey initiated by the Board of Supervisors, strongly supported meeting that need. And whereas in 1967, the Orange County Board of Supervisors approved the construction of a 51-bed nursing home. And whereas in 1970, the Orange County Nursing Home began operations and the board appointed a nursing home commission to oversee the operations of the nursing home. And whereas during the 1970s and 80s, the need for long-term care services in Orange County continued to grow and the nursing home was expanded in several stages to 168 beds in order to meet that need. And whereas during 2002, the nursing home expanded again by 17 beds to take on a new role in providing rehabilitation services to the citizens requiring this medical service. And whereas during the years 2005 to 2009, the name of the nursing home was changed to Dogwood Village. The Dogwood Foundation was formed to provide new funding for operations and improvements and the 66-bed senior living facility was constructed. And whereas on October 2nd, 2020, the Newsweek magazine and statistical research ranked Dogwood Village as one of the 10 best nursing homes in Virginia. And whereas on November 19th, 2020, the Health Carlyle Innovators announced that Dogwood Village was the winner of the Long-Term Care Innovation Award for their effective approach to dealing with COVID-related distancing. Now, therefore be it resolved on this first day of December 2020 that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Dogwood Village on its 50 years of caring service to the citizens of Orange County. And be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisor congratulates the staff and volunteers of Dogwood Village for being selected as one of the best nursing homes in Virginia and for winning the Long-Term Care Innovation Award. Certified James P. Crozier Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors." Again, thank you all for what you've done and what you've been doing for many years. And I know many of you have been there for quite a long time helping us. That has been great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Here, let me stick it back.
Thank you. I do the same for you sometimes.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda.
Will be approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Mr. Goodman. All right. Item 5A is new business award of the contract for architectural and engineering services for renovations to the former Blue Bell Building. Amanda?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. In front of you, we have a member requesting to award a contract for architectural and engineering services for the renovations of the former Blue Bell Building. In early September, we released a solicitation seeking, seeking proposals from qualified firms to provide architectural and engineering services to renovate the Blue Bell Building. The contract at firm is to create a professional plan to develop the building into a vocational center for students with class spaces for auto body, cosmetology, trade skills, nursing, culinary arts, and other programs. We received 17 responses. The selection committee consisting of the county and schools ranked the proposals and had interviews with the top three. They were very good proposals and each firm had quite a bit of knowledge renovating buildings. However, after much thought, we decided that Quinn Evans was the best qualified firm to provide the requested services. They have experience renovating older buildings into programs such as VOTEC for high school students. A cost estimate of $221,030 was received, which is, which align with the projected cost for professional services. Funding for this project is budgeted at $2.5 million and is available in the school CIP fund, the Blue Bell Vocational Technical Center renovation, Project S0577. It is staff's recommendation that the board consider awarding a contract to Quinn Evans for the length of the project plus one year from the date of the final payment for work related to the project.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions? Was there an estimate or schedule that tells us the length of the project in terms of how are you going to characterize that in the, in the contract document? Is there, is that the actual, when the architect engineer starts work till the end of the construction or rehab, is that, is that the project definition?
Yes. So once the renovation is complete, it's a year after that.
Okay. One thing I want to make sure we're clear on. This is evaluation of the entire structure. However.
It's 6,000 square feet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we're. I'm sorry, I missed. It's, it's for evaluation of the entire structure. But the VOTEC center, the initial phase of it, will be 6,000 square feet. They will not occupy the entire building. And then there's another 6,000 square feet for future expansion. But just wanted to make sure we had that covered in the piece. The way this reads, it could very easily read that the entire thing was for the VOTEC center.
What is the connection between the school and the, and this contractor to be able to make sure that they're both on the same track?
Do you mean that the student's needs are being met, Mr. Frank?
Well, I don't know. What?
So in charge of the project, Mr. Berry is here, obviously, but Doug Arnold from the schools, he's in charge of special projects, and Aaron Kane will be sort of tag teaming that process along with a co-board of folks from those organizations.
Okay, just, I mean, sometimes contractors got their own ideas and I want to make sure that they've got our ideas.
Absolutely. And I want to make sure they have school-specific ideas for, you know, there's different requirements for safety and classroom sizes and things like that that are, that are different than some of our regular construction projects, which is why we want to put a team together.
Anything else?
Sure.
Part of the proposals, all of those who bid on the project did talk to involving school staff in with the determining of how to do, what to do. Because we, like you, don't want to say, okay, you have this grand plan that you did somewhere else, but it doesn't fit our needs. And so there will be constant conversations between our CTE instructors, our Director of Secondary Instruction, and others to make sure that they are meeting the needs of Orange County and not.
Okay, all right. That's, I just want to make sure that connection is tight.
And this is actually a county project to assist the schools. So Aaron will be involved throughout the process as well.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Move to approve if that's where you were.
Yes, that's exactly where I was at.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Goodwin is aye. Very good. Thank you, Amanda. Yeah, if I can get past my technical issues here. We'll move on with the rest of the meeting. Okay. Next is item six A under Old Business, SUP twenty dash oh one, Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnics Art Guild. Sandra Thornton, Plan and Services Manager. This was carried over from the December first public hearing. Mrs. Thornton.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. At the meeting on the first, I did review the staff report and summarize the planning commission's recommendation, the resolution regarding the planning commission's action had been in your December first package. This evening, if it's appropriate, I wanted to review the planning commission's deliberations of this matter.
Yes, go ahead.
And as I mentioned last time, this, this application was, the processing of it was significantly affected by the, I guess, advent, you could say, of the pandemic and how we've been at a trickle since March. The planning commission opened its public hearing on this matter on May twenty-first, twenty twenty, at which time the initial staff report was presented and representatives of the applicant organization gave their presentation to the commission. The commission's discussion focused on noise concerns, debris, parking, camping, the history of the organization, what constitutes an event, and the qualifications of participants in the proposed activities. The hearing was continued to June four, twenty twenty, for the receipt of public comment. And it was anticipated at that time that all written comments, the deadline for which had been advertised for five p.m. on June third, would be read into the hearing record. Due to the unusually high volume of comments with a short window during which commissioners could review them, the June four, twenty twenty meeting was canceled and the hearing was continued to June eighteen, twenty twenty, with the public comment period remaining open until June fifteen. During this period of time, the applicants were provided with copies of the public comments as the commissioners were receiving them. At their June eighteen meeting, the planning commission considered a request from the applicants and their legal counsel for postponement to the commission's August sixth regular meeting date to allow time for counsel to review the materials received to date. The commission voted unanimously to accommodate the applicant's request. By letter dated July twenty, twenty twenty, the applicant submitted proposed amendments to their original application in response both to public comments received through June eighteen and also to conditions proposed by staff in the original staff report. On August sixth, twenty twenty, after considerable discussion about the requirements of the continuity of government ordinance adopted by the Board of Supervisors on April twenty-eighth in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the commission voted unanimously to request that the board consider revising the ordinance to allow comments to be entered into the official record without having to be read into the record. The motion called for continuation of the public hearing to September third, or to such date as action had been taken by the Board of Supervisors with respect to the handling of written comments. In total, the planning commission received one hundred and forty-one comment letters in opposition to the proposal and forty-eight letters in support of the application. It should be noted that the number of letters in opposition represents some number of duplicates as some individuals and households submitted more than one set of comments. And it should also be noted that among the letters supporting the proposal, a number had been received from non-Orange residents and property owners, but also that a number of adjacent property owners had written in support of approval of the proposed special use permit. Subsequent to that commission discussion, it was determined that the continuity of government ordinance did permit comments to be entered into the public hearing without having to be read into it. So the matter was included on the September third planning commission agenda. At that time, the commission's public hearing was closed and supplemental staff comments on the applicant's July submitted were reviewed and considered. The commission discussed with the applicants the history of complaints about their activities on other property, the history of the twenty sixteen zoning text amendment to add this use to special uses in agricultural district, and concerns about hours of operation, noise, and environmental issues. Commissioners acknowledged that the applicants had been good citizens, but based on the public responses overwhelmingly in opposition to the proposal, the commission voted three to one to recommend denial of the application to the Board of Supervisors. If the Board of Supervisors wishes to consider potential conditions for approval of the special use permit, I have, the staff has proposed some, some of the conditions which I will review. The board may, of course, modify, remove, or otherwise edit these proposed conditions, as well as add other conditions as deemed appropriate. The following are intended to address potential impacts of the proposed use and to ensure compatibility of the application with applicable provisions of the Orange County zoning code. It must be noted that as presented, the proposed activity is not compatible with the intent and purpose of the agricultural one future land use category in the county comprehensive plan, although it must be recognized that the predominant use of the land, which is open space and agriculture, is in fact compatible with the current plan. So as proposed, the terms of the special use permit would be to allow conduct of pyrotechnics testing and manufacturing as defined in section seventy dash one of the Orange County zoning code with associated on-site dry camping and group assembly as defined herein on the property identified on the Orange County tax maps as parcel sixty-one dash thirty-two. For the purposes of the special use permit, dry camping and group assembly shall be defined as on-site overnight stays solely by members of Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnic Arts Guild Incorporated and excluding the general public. The campground is defined in section seventy dash one of the Orange County zoning code, which offers accommodations to paying guests from the general public, is prohibited. With respect to uses in site design, there are eleven conditions proposed. One, this SUP is to allow pyrotechnics testing and manufacturing by members of Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnics Arts Guild Incorporated as described in the application with cover letter dated December seventeen, twenty nineteen, submitted by the applicant and is modified by correspondence dated July twenty, twenty twenty, from David G. Stoddard, President, which sets forth particular clarification to portions of the aforementioned application as well as proposed amendments to said application. Two, activities shall be conducted on site in accordance with the locations as generally depicted on figure F one site plan attached. Parking will generally be in the area designated on the site plan. If additional parking is required, it will be in the nearest field east of the entrance gate, which borders Wolfbrook Lane. Three, an Orange County fireworks display permit approved by the county administration in conjunction with the Orange County zoning administrator shall be required for each fireworks display event or for such multiple fireworks display events as the county may determine appropriate. Prior to the issuance of the first such fireworks display permit each calendar year, it shall be verified that no raw E M S have been established within a distance close enough that the activity would interfere with the nest's site. Four, notification signs shall be posted a minimum of one week prior to each fireworks display event and renewed at the event of each such event weekend. Five, debris shall be removed from the property and disposed of at the end of each event. Six, any explosives on the property shall be scored in accordance with Virginia Department of Fire Programs regulations and applicable ATF regulations. Seven, fireworks activity shall be limited annually to the period beginning May one through October thirty-one, during which times there shall be no more than four weekends scheduled for fireworks activities and no more than one event per month. There shall be no fireworks activities during the months of August of each year. Eight, testing shall be limited to Fridays and Saturdays between the hours of one p.m. and four p.m. Nine, displays of fireworks shall be limited to Fridays and Saturdays between the hours of nine p.m. to ten forty-five p.m. There shall be no displays of fireworks on Sundays through Thursdays, except for celebrations of holidays or other special events that may be approved by the county administration and zoning administrator. There shall be no fireworks displays whatsoever on school nights. Ten, salutes shall be limited to four inches or less in any dimension. Fireworks that exceed NFPA code limitations shall be prohibited. NFPA dash eleven twenty-three dash twenty-eighteen permits salutes up to five inches in diameter. By restricting salutes to four inches, the volume of pyrotechnic material is reduced by forty-nine percent. Four-inch salutes are used in the vast majority of displays in the USA. The loudness of the four-inch salute is half that of the NFPA code permitted five-inch salutes. Eleven, attendance by members of Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnics Arts Guild Incorporated at testing and fireworks events shall be limited to one hundred attendees per event. There will be no public access to MCPAG events. And that concludes the proposed conditions.
Mrs. Thornton, I have two questions. Item C addresses a permit approved by the county administrator in conjunction with the zoning administrator. And item I refers back to the same thing. I need to direct this to you, but also to the county administrator, or not the county administrator, the county attorney. Is this not the reason that this went to an SUP, that it removed those?
Yeah, we shouldn't be doing permits. They used to do this by permit, but the display permit was for fireworks event, which is not what these folks do. And so what we told them is you can't be getting, using permits as the methodology to do what you're trying to do because.
And that's where we've ended up.
Right. That's why we have this use permit application out there.
So those two items, those conditions need to be removed from that if it's moved to.
Well, yeah, they're internally inconsistent. They're contradictory, self-controversial.
I mean, you would not have them get a permit each time?
No, that was the entire reason for these special use permits. They are limited to the particular activities. In the past, what was it, as much as thirty-six permits a weekend because of individuals?
No, we were doing them per event, but maybe you could think of this, this is the difference. A county fair might need a permit. Kings Dominion doesn't. There's a land use issue. So, you know, Kings Dominion does whatever zoning they need to do to be able to do that there permanently. And you don't, whereas a local fair might require a permit to operate because it's a sporadic event. And what fireworks permit is designed for a display event, a public display event, which is not what these folks do. And that's what prompted this to start with. They, they don't need a display permit because they're not doing a public display. And in fact, one of the conditions is they can't even let the public come. So, you know, they don't need a public display permit and they're not even allowed to let the public come.
So if, in fact, there's a motion and a second to move this forward, that would need to be rewritten in this, correct?
Yeah, it's internally inconsistent.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think that this, and I had understood too, that part of the reason for the zoning text amendment was to basically obviate the need for them to come, you know, each time they wanted to do an event to come get a permit. It had also become apparent that in the past, there had been no real communication between county administration and the zoning staff, you know, about the events. So, you know, I guess the zoning administrator had been unaware, you know, of these events unless they, you know, learned about it some other way. I think through some of the commission discussion, one of the matters that, information that I believe came from the applicants was that in part of this process of obtaining the county permit is what I believe, and I could, please correct me if I'm wrong, part of that process was to notify the, you know, nine-one-one center and whatever, you know, public safety people needed to be aware of these events. So I don't know whether that's, that's a matter that, you know, maybe a condition should address, just to ensure that everyone who needs to know about the events knows.
And Ms. Thornton is correct. It is the county administrator's office responsibility to communicate, to dispatch and fire an EMS in the sheriff's office when a permit has been issued in case there are.
Okay, but this is my whole point with this. Going with a special use permit was in place of getting individual permits. I have no problem if this is moved forward where there is a notification requirement.
But in addition to the notification signs, they say notification sign, but if they notify the county administrator?
Right. Because as Mr. Latchney and I both, we sat through these meetings and that was part of the entire discussion and the reasoning for this. Absolutely, there should be notification, but if they were going to get individual permits, then you could throw this out and they'd get individual permits.
Well, that's the point. If the permits are the valid way to go, then we don't need to do this.
So.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we're bordering on one of the fundamental issues in front of us. This, this request as, as presented is a land use matter. And because it's a land use matter, that directs us to our comprehensive plan. And land use decisions are guided by our comprehensive plan. The plan that exists today has been in effect since two thousand and thirteen, and it actually provides very explicit guidance with regard to the matters involved in this SUP. I say it's been around since two thousand and thirteen because I say it's been around since twenty thirteen because one of the things the plan says is sort of a general setting is that it's, one of its main purposes is to communicate to all the stakeholders, and it goes and gives a list. It talks about landowners, residents, elected officials, investors, developers, and so forth. All, the purpose of the plan is to communicate to that, that array of stakeholders what the land, the expected land use developments and patterns are going to be looked like according to the plan across the entire county. In twenty thirteen, when this plan was adopted, the land use categories were redefined and refined to help that communication. And one of the five categories that was established at that point was called an A. One. Just so happens that this particular property, that's the subject of the S U. P., is in the A. One land use category. As a matter of fact, behind the county administrator, there's a map, and that green area at the southern tip is an area of A. One, and it includes the properties in question here. A. One is a special category because it was created, and it, in the language from the plan, says something like this, "for the purpose of protecting the rural agricultural, historical, and conservation areas of the county." To achieve those purposes, the plan is very specific. It allows only three uses, and it uses the term "allow," or allowable, I think is actually the word that's in there. And those uses are agriculture, forestry, and homesteads. That's it. Now, it does say, within agriculture, there's a farm stand or a farm stand, it can be there, and it defines homesteads to include large estates. But when you boil it down, what it's really saying is there are three allowable land uses in A. One, agricultural, forestry, homestead. In my analysis of this, there is no set of conditions, or frankly, no torturing of language that can make this request look like agriculture or forestry or a homestead. And as a point of emphasis that Ms. Thornton mentioned, the planning commission, which is really the organization that takes the lead in developing our comprehensive plan and is very knowledgeable in understanding the underlying intents, they found in their resolution that this application was, and I think it's a quote, "inconsistent with the twenty thirteen comp plan." That was their assessment. I think they got it right. So whenever you're ready for that point, I'm prepared to make a motion that we actually apply the plain language of the comp plan.
I'm afraid I disagree with you on that determination.
Okay. Well, I haven't made the motion yet. I'm just, I'm announcing that I'm...
I'm not talking about the motion, I'm just talking about the determination. I mean, we, back in two thousand sixteen, we went ahead and passed a, an ordinance that allowed fireworks in the county in agricultural area.
We did.
So, and we said fifty acres as a minimum because we were trying to get it away from anything else. And we're saying, if I go to A. Two, which is the other agriculturally zoned area, we're saying that those areas basically have scattered groups of residences, subdivisions, and things like that. So if we pass this ordinance to create this thing for fifty acres, it seems an A. One is more, more appropriate to that than an A. Two.
Except an A. Two also provides for commercial and businesses and those kinds of...
But I don't see this as a commercial activity. I mean, I see this as a recreational activity that doesn't necessarily impact the agricultural aspects of it. I mean, you still, you've still got open fields, you still, you're not building a lot of buildings there, you're not running a commercial operation, you've got people coming down to do recreation. And so I see this as, as more appropriate to A. One than to A. Two.
Well, maybe we find it's not appropriate anywhere. That's the other possibility.
And if that's, if that's the case, then we need to remove fire, pyrotechnics and fireworks from the, from the, from the zoning ordinance altogether. But I don't see that's a necessity. I mean, to me, it looks like A. One is the place to put this, where you don't have a lot of people, you don't have a lot of development, and you don't have a lot of residential areas that could be impacted by it. So, I mean, it just, it just seems it's more appropriate in A. One than in A. Two.
Well, I think that's a separate question. Appropriateness is a separate question from the plain language of the comp plan. This is not ag, this is not forestry, this is not a homestead. And page twenty-five could not be more clear.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, it says to be protected from residential and commercial growth.
Yeah, look later, look at the, look at the, I think it's in the table there. I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but... Read the language under A. One on that table. I see the table.
Table over here, sir.
The table?
That defines it.
Okay. Protect the rural agricultural historic conservation areas by preserving open space, which this does, living population, which this doesn't have any impact on, allowing little or no development, which this doesn't do.
Now, now you're getting to the words.
Other than agricultural forested farm markets and homesteads and larger estates.
Right.
Well, only we're talking about, we talk, we have in other parts of the thing, and the state does this, is saying farm, you know, farm tourism is a part of what we do in the state now, and this seems to me just another aspect of providing recreation or whether we call it pyrotechnic tourism or...
Like I said, you know, you can torture the language, but it requires torture.
I'm, I'm just having a hard time, you know, thinking that if we decided we want to put this in the county, that we're saying that A. One is, would be, to me, to be the more preferable place because that way you have more open space and less people impacted.
All right. Mr. Johnson, did you have any comment?
I may, I may have a comment or two. First of all, on the, on the YouTube feed right now, we're scrunched up in the corner and, and we look like five ants sitting up there. So it's difficult for anybody who's watching on YouTube who's not intimately acquainted with our voices to know who's speaking. So I am Mark Johnson, just, I don't want the rest of you to get blamed.
I'm not Mark Johnson.
Yes. Jim looked at this from one angle, and, and obviously Lee's looking at it from another angle, and it's, you know, there's open to discussion there. But, you know, I look at this strictly from a, sort of a, I can get along with either one of them on their particular points about, about A. One versus A. Two. I think anytime we look at rezoning, we need to look at what is the current zoning in that area? What is the expectation that people who live in that area have? And will the proposed rezoning, which is what this is, even though it's, it's an S U. P., will the proposed rezoning leave intact the right of the, of the people in the area and in the county as well as allowing, we've now gone large screen on YouTube, so you can see this a little bit better, so that the applicant can, can get what they want, but, but also the, the landowners in the area and the county as a whole also have their rights preserved? So it's difficult for me to look at this and say that there's anything for Orange County in this. It's not tourismly. You can't say this is tourism because they specifically said that there's not, public's not going to be involved. So it's, it's, it's really not tourism. I have, I have nothing against fireworks. I think fireworks are fine. This is something more than fireworks. This is a club dedicated to experimentation, to, it's a hobby. It's done purely for their enjoyment, their entertainment. It is not done for anyone else. It's purely a club, and it's, their request is purely for that club. When I look at these, these issues too, I look at how long have they owned the land? Have they been doing something like this for a while? And because some rules changed, maybe they need a special use permit? No, they bought this land fairly recently. They bought it, as near as I can tell, specifically for this purpose. Orange County citizens have been overwhelmingly opposed to it. The people who are in favor of it are overwhelmingly from Vermont and Atlanta and Texas and all over the place. So I don't feel any necessity to support this just because it's what some club, some hobby group wants to do. I've got to see something in this for Orange County, and I, there's nothing I see, there's no benefit to Orange County that I can see. Now, I can go off into a parallel universe and argue that under property rights, you should be able to do this, okay? I know that there's people who'll say, well, you can go out and shoot guns and they make noise, okay? But that's not really the point here because we're not deciding whether somebody can shoot guns. We're deciding whether or not somebody can build explosives and set them off for fun in the middle of an agricultural area. That's what we're deciding. That's what our ordinance gives us the responsibility to do. And I can't see where this is good for Orange County. I can't see where it's good for the neighbors. And if we, if we allow this, then I'm kind of looking around the county and saying, well, if somebody wants to do this tomorrow somewhere else in the county, how, how are we going to deny them? I mean, if, if this is just a fun thing where people are setting off fireworks and, and so we're going to allow it, then I don't see how we, if anybody else comes up with a hundred and fifty acres, you know, on what, on what basis are we, are we going to turn them down?
Do you, do you feel that we should basically remove that aspect from our zoning ordinance to, for fireworks in agricultural areas?
Well, that's another issue, and I don't, I'm not prepared to really discuss that, and I'm not sure what the county attorney might say about that.
Well, I'm just...
But they're, you know, I mean, we have in our ordinance, we have, you know, certain zoning classifications, like I think agriculture is one of them. We're just talking about this today. One of the, the uses in agriculture is airports. Well, you know, we would be hard pressed to approve an airport, you know, a commercial airport somewhere in Orange County. In our ordinance, yes, but it's, it's not something that we would really seriously consider. And so to answer your question, I don't know. We would have to talk about that and know the, the ins and outs of that.
I would, I would just sense that if we couldn't do it here, we can't do it anywhere in the county. If we can't do it anywhere in the county, let's get it out of the ordinance.
Well, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that, I can't, I don't agree with you that this is the most appropriate place in the whole county, okay? I'm not going to get into where I think it's more appropriate because I don't want to get, you know, run off the road on the way home. But I, but I think, I think it's a difficult argument to say this is the most appropriate.
Let me back up just a little bit, just to do a little more history on this. This club, members of this club have been in this county for many, many years doing exactly this. They were doing it down in my district, and it bordered Mr. Fram's district. And it was at a point where the residential development had encroached on the area and that there was a need because this wasn't just a Fourth of July celebration or whatever else. And unfortunately, a picture has been painted that this is just a club, and that is the picture that has been painted. It is a club. I don't, I can't speak for the applicants, but I believe they would be more than happy to have the public there. But I believe due to public pressure from the people that don't want this, they removed that portion of it, excuse me, from their application. The real unfortunate part of this is they said, and the county worked with them, that fifty acres was the safe, acceptable minimum to do this. They do training for the state police, for their ordinance people, they do, do a lot of training, a lot of goodwill type things. But when the ordinance was drawn up, unfortunately, the landowner that they had been at for a very long time was unaware of how much land he had, and the fatal mistake here is they unfortunately did not do enough due diligence, ended up having forty-seven and a half acres or something like that. So it put them away from a willing landowner and immediate residents that really did not complain about it, that enjoyed it. There were a number from Lake of the Woods that enjoyed it, a number that did not enjoy it, and the public had come to it before. So through this process, they have become just a club that wants to do it for themselves. That's the only thing I really needed to clear up is they had been very open, very welcoming of people coming and everything else.
Well, but I understand all that, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to make sure that there was more backstory there.
But what we're, what we're, my comment, I'm not, I don't have anything against the applicants. I, I think that they're probably fine people, and as far as I know, I don't know them personally. That's why I'm equivocating, I'm not casting aspersions. And, and I accept the fact that they are, they're absolutely professional and know what they're doing and so forth and so on. I'm not, I don't, I'm not quibbling about that. What I am saying is, for whatever reason, this has been squeezed down into a, basically it's a, it's a hobby and it's a club. So this is not something where, like a, a standard tourist attraction where you want as many people as you can get within reason to come in.
And I concur with you.
We're not, we're not doing that. So therefore, this really almost becomes purely, if you're, if you're going to vote in favor of this, you pretty much have to do it on a basis on, well, I think it's their land, they ought to be able to do what they want to. I don't, I don't have any other way you can, you can justify it because the Orange County's not getting anything. Orange County residents are not getting anything. And I mean, I know that they, they do some events and that sort of thing, but that's not, that's not enough to justify a special use permit that will greatly impact people in that area and has the potential to greatly impact people in other parts of the county because the next person who comes up with something similar to this, if we approve this, we're going to be on shaky footing to turn it, turn someone else down for the same thing.
And that's part of my argument. We either apply the language of the comp plan rigorously and literally, or we should change it, and that day may, could come as well. And, and, and so it's, I mean, you, you, I don't get to the, the point where I'm assessing the goodwill of the applicant or anything. I, I don't, I don't question their goodwill at all. That's not the issue. There are, there are some technical issues here too. If I recall, the language in our ordinance, it provides for the ability to test and manufacture. It doesn't say anything about displays, salutes, or any of that stuff. It's very specific as I, the last time I looked at it, which was not today, I must have...
No, that's what it says.
It says something like testing and manufacturing, and so there, there are sort of internal technical issues with, with the application and its compliance with...
Say you're, you're testing it when you're displaying it.
Well, except that in their application, they define testing on certain, at a certain Well, except that in their application, they define testing on certain, at a certain hour on a certain day. But I don't want to, we don't need to get to that issue. As I said before, there is no set of conditions that can make this ag forest or homestead. And that's where, that's where we are.
Much as I would like not to at this time, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
I've got a couple of other comments yet. I'd like to continue this discussion or I can do it when it comes time to my vote. I don't care.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Frame.
Well, I mean, we have a, we've had a lot of, of people who have said, no, they don't like it. And, and I tried to look and there's a few who are close enough that they probably will be impacted. But I would say the majority of them are five miles or, or greater from this location. And I find it hard to have, that they have a significant impact. My, my, my sense is that they are concerned about the character of the county because if we do this, they see this as something changing the rural nature of the county. Now, I have been down when we were actually, Cracker Jacks were doing this at my end of the county. And I didn't see that as anything having an impact on the, on the rural nature. So I mean, I, I, I don't see that as a, as an impact. One other area, this is, you know, how many SUPs does a county get that gets attention all over the country? At least, I mean, we had, the last time this happened was with Walmart. And we were getting comments from as far away as Australia. But this one is coming up down the east coast and, and I really hate to say, okay, we've got all these people who are going to be very cued, cued into whether or not we approve this SUP or not. So there'll be a whole bunch of people, hundreds of them, that are going to know we said yea or said nay. And if we say nay, does that mean that we don't want them to come to Orange County? Are we going to say that we don't want outsiders in here doing anything? Is that going to have an impact on our tourism? I mean, I, I, you know, we, when we did the thing with Walmart, part of our concern there was would we be considered a business unfriendly county? Fortunately Walmart found another location and we were able to, to deal with that issue. But I'm just saying that this would seem to me that we are an outsider, unfriendly county with this, with this SUP denial.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to that. I, I share that concern in part, but I have two occasions within the last month and a half to speak to, one case a landowner, another case someone interested in developing something. And as I learned about what they were trying to do and where, I asked them if they had read our comprehensive plan. In neither case had they, had they read it.
Doesn't surprise me.
It just so happened in both of these, unbeknownst to them, both cases, they were in A1 areas. So I recited to them a little bit about A1 as I, as I did tonight. And I got this long silent pause on the other end. Part of my reason for mentioning that this plan was adopted and has been in place unmodified in this portion since 2013 is we did announce to the world what the expectations were in A1, what the purpose of A1 was. And so were this a situation, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, where we had sort of changed the rules in, in midstream? I think we would have to be quite careful about how we, what kind of reaction we would get and what kind of image we are, we are sending to the community and to the world. But in this case, it was very clearly announced, at least by 2013, and has been unchanged.
Well, I mean, we, I, I think we are elected to represent Orange County. Okay? We're not elected to make people in other states feel warm and fuzzy about Orange County. Now, I'm certainly not going to go out of my way to make someone in, in Iowa think, boy, those people in Orange County are just a bunch of, bunch of crabs. But we're talking about a, a, we spend a lot of money on, on a tourism department to, to talk about the things that make Orange County special and, and will make you come here from another county or another state, maybe even another country. So, so we're not, we're not in any way being unfriendly to outsiders. And they're actually outsiders who moved to Orange County and then they're part of the community and they actually have a stake in it. But when you're talking about someone who, you know, they want to come to Orange County, I mean, you could, you would run into the same thing if you, if you're going to have a racetrack. I mean, you'd have drivers from up and down the east coast who would say, yeah, I think it's great for have a racetrack in Orange County. Let's, let's put a, let's put.
Put not in A1.
Let's put Daytona, you know, in, in, in Barbersville. That'd be great. We come down there and race our cars. So I mean, certainly we don't want to appear to be, you know, backward and, and against outsiders because we think they're going to pollute us, but we, we, we need to represent Orange County and the people of Orange County and do what's in their best interest. And in this case, to me, that's pretty clear.
All right. I'd like to go ahead and get a motion for either approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll finish my motion that I started. I, I'd like to move that based on the inconsistency with the comp plan, that we deny the request that is known as SUP twenty dash oh one.
A second.
There's a second on it. Okay. We will have a little more discussion before we take a vote on this particular motion. I've done a lot of homework on this, but there was one piece of homework I didn't do until the public hearing. And that was when Mrs. Thornton was reading that it was in A1. Because it was on the paper as being in A2. And I differ from Mr. Frame a little bit and I felt that everything was appropriate. The A1 absolutely, I think is, is there for a reason. And I will be the first one to tell you, I think that this organization is superb. The people in it are superb. I've had many interactions and I, I, I think it's quite honestly admirable that there was a, not one, but purchase of two pieces of property for this. And I'll, I'll, I'll leave my comment at that because I honestly would not like to be a part of this vote, but I am. So with that, is there any more discussion regarding this particular motion? All right, Mrs. Simpson.
Ready for the roll call?
Roll call vote.
Sure. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Very, very, very reluctantly.
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Nay.
Mr. Goodwin? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
All right. The denial passes three to two. Moving on to our next item.
Mr. Crozier, just, just to make it clear to those watching on YouTube, the motion was to deny, the motion passed, so the application is denied.
That, that, that is correct. Yes. All right. Moving right along to rezoning twenty dash oh two, SUP twenty dash oh three, Storeland LLC. This is carried over from the public hearing on December first. Mrs. Thornton.
The planning commission opened concurrent public hearings on rezoning twenty dash oh two and special use permit twenty dash oh three on October first. It was noted at that time that staff had received a number of telephone inquiries about the proposal primarily from Lake of the Woods residents. Steve McLean presented the proposal on behalf of the applicants explaining that it would be very similar to Kaulkepper self-storage, which he previously developed. The commission's questions and discussion focused on lighting, noise, buffering, outdoor storage, hours of operation, site access and wetlands, stormwater and drainage concerns. The hearing was continued to October fifteenth for receipt of written comments. The commission did request that the applicant provide a revised site plan or, or rather site concept plan and information pertaining to noise regulation prior to the October fifteenth meeting. On October fifteenth, the commission admitted comments received into the hearing record, reviewed the applicant's supplemental materials and continued discussion of stormwater management concerns, vegetative buffering and landscaping, hours of operation, fencing and noise concerns. Commissioner Papel suggested that screening be a condition of the request at rezoning. However, staff did indicate that this would require that a probe be submitted prior to the board's public hearing. Commissioner Hutchinson moved to recommend approval of rezoning twenty dash zero two. The motion was seconded by Commissioner Papel and carried unanimously. Commissioner Hutchinson moved to recommend approval of special use permit twenty dash oh three with conditions as discussed. The motion was seconded by Commissioner Papel and carried unanimously. The proposed conditions are included in the resolution that the board previously received. If you would like me to review those, I'm glad to do so.
Anyone have any? No, not necessarily, Mrs. Thornton. Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
The plan that is dated, November twenty seventh, it shows the boat storage area. I don't know if you can see this, but it's, it shows the boat storage area in between all of the buildings. Is that the one, is that locked into the, into this SUP?
If, if the condition refers to the materials submitted as the controlling documents, then it will.
Okay, so, so that, okay. Because there was a request on the part of Lake of the Woods to include a provision so that it wouldn't be visible from Lake of the Woods, but it would seem that this, since this is the plan, it already does that.
And that, that was the applicant's intent when he spoke.
Well, as I say, if this is the document that we're talking about, then, then that's already in the, in this SUP as one of the controlling, as a controlling document.
And it has, it's the buffering of the buildings and other things around it.
Yeah, it's got.
I don't have it in front of me, but I, I think I recall the one you were saying.
It's got the, the storage area in here.
Yeah, right.
Here's a.
Stream buffering, all the D.
Yeah, all, all that stuff, yeah. And the, the second item request, there were two, three items requested by Lake, by Lake of the Woods as conditions in the SUP. Another one was that they wanted the, the site plan and the stormwater stuff to be deliverable or they wanted to be able to see it. And once those things have been submitted, they're public documents. Is that correct, Tom? And therefore they have a right to it anyway, so it doesn't necessarily need to be as an SUP condition.
No, I mean, they would be foillable. Yeah, whatever they file would be foillable.
And the third item that they asked to be deleted, he offered two, two areas of possibilities on buffering. A fifty-foot buffer should be maintained on the rear, consist of a thirty-foot natural buffer plus a planting of a single row of Leland Cypress and the twenty feet of buffers closer to the fence. Or cleared fifty-foot buffer to be planted with a minimum of two rolls of Leland Cypress. They would like to remove that. I talked to the developer. He doesn't have any problems with that. Would stay with the one, one row of Leland Cypress and leave the rest of the thirty feet as natural. So other than, than that particular change to the SUP conditions.
So that's a period after the word erected and then delete the rest of that.
Yeah, period there.
All right. Did you have anything else, Mr. Thornton?
Yes, sir. I, I just, just to follow up on Mr. Frame's points about the revised, the submitted after the planning commission's hearings. You may, I'm thinking that the conditions may want to reference materials that were submitted or all the materials that were submitted. I think if we say submitted with the application, that refers to the original submittal. So I just want to, I think, add some clarifying language to mean, to include.
And, and revised prior to the. Okay. I don't have a problem with that. That's just, that makes it clear.
What I've done in the past is referenced the date of the site plan that will.
Okay, then, then let's, let's add that.
Be included as part of the adoption.
And let's add that. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yes, sir.
Given that, I would move that this SUP be approved.
Rezoning first. I believe we have to do the rezoning first, Mr. Frame.
Oh, okay. All right.
Would you make that motion?
I make that motion to.
Approve the rezoning.
You got a second for Mr. Goodwin? Mr. Goodwin seconded?
Mr. Goodwin seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the rezoning?
Should take a roll call because it's an ordinance.
Roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin? And Mr. White?
Aye.
Five zero.
Passes unanimously. All right, now for the SUP. Do we have a?
I have motion to approve the SUP with the, with the modifications to the conditions as, as discussed.
Is there a second? Mr. Goodwin seconded. All right, roll call vote. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin? Five zero.
Very good. Moving right along. We now move to Department Director Constitutional Officer reports. I don't believe we have any. Mr. Latchney, county attorney's report.
Just Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Voorhees, county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas as well. Also, just for the public watching out there, we are going to have our administrative offices closed tomorrow, do this weather event. But because of all the teleworking we're able to do, we'll hopefully continue for the most part to be operating and we do think about our public safety and other essential workers who will be out in that mess trying to keep delivering services and clean up so we can open a little late on Thursday. And aside from that, our newsletter published today, so folks, you can take a look at that. We're trying to, you know, keep adding to our subscription, so folks want to sign up for that, they can do, do so by accessing the newsletter on the website or call our office and we'll sign you up. And finally, I just thought I'd mention that Army beat Navy this weekend fifteen to nothing. It was a historic game.
Did anybody see it?
It was well, well, well watched. There were some in attendance. It was pretty foggy though.
Yeah, I'm talking about the fog.
I know we heard the Blue Angels and heard the Apache helicopters. I don't think anybody saw them and I'm glad they, they didn't see each other too close. But anyway, I just thought I'd make sure Mr. Frame was aware of the outcome of that game.
I was, I did not go to the Naval Academy. I got an education.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Board comment?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. It's, the comment I'd actually planned to make before tonight's discussion on the SUPs and the other matter. But it was based on conversations that I referenced and have had in the past. I think it's important that as, as an entire organization, not just the board, but staff and everyone, make a habit of pointing inquiries to our comprehensive plan when it involves land use matters. There's some important information in there that describes our expectations and it's meant to be a communication tool for us. And it's meant to be a, a communication tool for us. And I think it's important to, uh, to use that and, and get in a habit of, of, uh, directing people to that, discussing it with them, whatever the case, what it needs to be. Uh, I think it would help going forward, uh, to, to
Absolutely.
Just make that a, a part of our, uh, the way we conduct business. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make one comment, um, regarding applications for SUPs. It is a landowner's right to apply. It's, it's not a guarantee, but it is a right. And that is something that our citizenry needs to understand. That, um, just because someone has the right to do something and they do it, does not automatically give them permission. And, um, it does not mean that the Planning Commission nor the Board of Supervisors are good or bad people because they look at it. That's how government is set up. And that is how our process works. And if it didn't work in that manner, I wouldn't want to be in this country. So it's very important that all of our citizenry be aware of not only their rights, but their obligations. And, uh, to remember that part of our job is to bring the varied views and opinions and come to what ends up being what we ultimately believe is the majority of the group, the appropriate thing for the county. And that's an issue that I've had with some of the issues we've had come before us, is people do not have an understanding about the rights of the people applying. And, uh, I just would like our citizenry to remember that. Mr. Johnson, you have anything?
I would just mention that the, the circle in Somerset is completed and, and come out and, and visit if you haven't.
Is the store open around a few times?
You're going to put a gazebo in the middle?
Uh, no, there's some trees there.
It's, it's free. You can take the ride for free.
Yeah, no toll yet.
And you can do like I did, and you can go down each leg and, and approach it from all four directions, just to fully appreciate that.
It's still a circle.
No, they, they did a nice job and, 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 and all joking aside, I, I certainly hope that that will cut down on accidents and, uh, eliminate, um, injuries and loss of life that we've seen at that intersection over the years, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Frame?
I have no comment.
Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to build on what you said about the, the SUP and kind of call attention to the board. S- solar facilities i- is a classic example where we don't really speak to that in the comp plan. And we don't have specific ordinances on it. We're, we're relying on the SUP process to deal with it. And we are getting lots of inquiries and so it's, that's a, that's a tough one for us because you can sort of, um, as was said earlier.
I don't think it's tough.
Well, it's very site-specific and, and, and it's a challenge for us, uh, so.
That doesn't belong in A1.
Well, okay, and, and That was one of the inquiries that I mentioned, but not by, it was, it was in an A1 area.
And just for the record, um, Sarah was here from Dominion two meetings ago, I believe.
Sarah Marshall.
And stated the need for more square mileage of solar arrays than Fairfax County size. And that is something that unfortunately, I believe the state has already begun to shove down our throat and water down our ability to control, which I have a major issue with, but right now it's been compromised. So, um, that is something that, uh, yes, unfortunately, they, they can apply, so. Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. All right, uh, let's see, next is going to be, um, I believe our calendar items.
Information.
Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything this evening? Going, going, gone. All right, we'll move on to the calendar. Do we have anything that we need to schedule on the calendar?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have, um, a request for a zoning text amendment and a subdivision text amendment. And if you, the, these have been, um, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, so they're forwarded to you. And if you want me to look up the specific section before you schedule them, I'm happy to do so.
No, I, I have no problem with it. Does anyone else have any problem with scheduling for the 26th of January?
Still moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And with that being said, uh, I believe I need one more motion.
You have a public comment.
Public comment, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir, no, no, we do not.
All right, well, I'll open, public comment, I'll close, public comment. Now I need one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Merry Christmas to you too, Mr. Goodwin, and
Good to you too.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.